Welcome to the record session of the Town Council. You're the chairman of the one day Thursday of July 25th. Please, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Here.
Councilman Bunch.
Here.
Councilwoman Clancy, present.
Vice Mayor Lamar.
Here.
Councilman McGuire.
Here.
And Francis.
Here. Uh, Mr. Stark, would you lead us in the press, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Sands, the nation under God, in the resolve of the liberty and justice law.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Public announcements just won. Thanks to the teams, Marshall and company, and all of those who put together this balloon festival. I hope to them to get another great event, but a lot of hosting on it, so a trip to the community. A call to the public, uh, already.
Ms. Spitzer.
Ms. Spitzer, Cave Creek President. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I stand in front of you tonight as a volunteer and manager of the Cave Creek Info Center. First of all, I'd like to thank Marshall Stein, Danny Palnow, and our other staff members who helped promote our wonderful town. Let us remember tourism is our only business, and visitors who come to Cave Creek benefit our merchants, our town, and our citizens alike. The Info Center is a community service provided by the Cave Creek Merchants and Events Association. This past high season, our information center was open seven days a week and assisted over 9,000 visitors who find new residence, well, residents too, restaurants, things to do, and places to shop. This was accomplished thanks to approximately 1,700 hours donated by our 24 dedicated and awesome volunteers. But what I'm here to tell you about tonight is our Love Our Locals program. Summertime is a slow time for our merchants, uh-huh, so this year the CCMEA has invited the Carefree Cave Creek Chamber to team up on a program to generate business for our local merchants as well as show appreciation for our local consumers. It's called Love Our Locals. How it works, any resident of Cave Creek or Carefree showing their driver's license will receive 10% or more discount on at the participating merchants. Those merchants will have this Love Our Locals logo displayed in their window, and the discounts and restrictions may vary according to each merchant. A listing of participating merchants will be posted on the CCMEA website and the Cave Creek, Carefree Cave Creek, uh, website as well. The program will run June 1st to September 30th. Please help us spread the word about this Love Our Locals program, and if you happen to talk to any local merchants interested in participating, please send them my way. They can contact me with cave creekinfocenter@yaku.com. So far, the local merchants that are excited about participating haven't gotten the word out yet, but the beginning ones are Cave Creek Olive Oil Company, Suzanne's Hot Spot Stuff, The Village Coffee Shop, The Girls Greasy Eats, Blue Coyote, a couple of Green Bums, Stockfish Trading Company, Buffalo Chip Saloon, Harold's Corral, and Hogs and Horses. We know this will get successful program, um, for our local community, so please spread the word and thank you for our, you know, for your support in this and what you do, uh, you know, for our tourism trade. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Tom Davenport, uh, Cave Creek resident, about seven years, live in Whispering Hills. Um, wanted to, uh, kinda have a, uh, let's call it a debrief on the, on the APS issues that were recently concluded. Uh, and I first liked to start off with, uh, and a couple of people I thought were particularly helpful in getting us, uh, as far as we've gotten so far, certainly the mayor, who has hosted a number of meetings and raised the cost to get into, uh, the same number of people. And then Dick Esser was, uh, very helpful throughout the process. Um, I am, uh, I'm a bit upset by the turn of events and recently by what seems to be an unseemly rush to get a permit issued, uh, to APS on this, uh, this project. Um, it seems like a matter of days to get it done as opposed to six months to get, uh, documentation to the, uh, city council to review, uh, an undergrounding, uh, proposal. That proposal, that idea of going to undergrounding of public utilities, uh, still needs to be addressed. Uh, this is sort of an open issue, at least as far as I'm concerned, and instead of coming to a conclusion. If this would be not only now, but held now, then it says so, but I think we need to get some answers on that. Uh, additionally, I need to get to the bottom of certain other issues. For example, why was the obvious route down, uh, New River Road not chosen by APS? How did that, uh, how did that occur? Um, I do know, for example, that Cave Creek had done it, attend some initial meetings with APS when, uh, when routes were first, uh, first discussed. Um, but just finally, let me just say this, uh, when Whispering Hills isn't finished with this battle, uh, and I'm certainly not done, and we are going to continue to, uh, proceed, uh, in attempting to get APS to change that route. In the meantime, as I said, I did feel that some thanks for your work, certainly Dick and to, uh, to you, Mayor. Uh, also, I think, uh, as you mentioned, that, uh, I think Mike Durkin was also particularly helpful, and as, and as was Al Stein. So, again, I do want to make sure that publicly these people thank, thank you.
Jackie Davis.
Jackie Davis, 7322 East Highland Road in Cave Creek. Just briefly, I want to express my disappointment over your decision to ignore the apparently routine road closings for motorcycle special events. There are lots of problems with them, health and safety issues with traffic congestion and blocking of emergency vehicles, liability concerns for the town, general quality of life issues for the residents, including loss of property values. It's even more surprising because when I look at the Town Core Plan, I see many references to established goals regarding developments and activities in keeping, quote, "with our cultural and western history." For example, under guiding principles in the Town Core Plan, the Town Core is the center of community's history and a key to its identity. Or, under circulation, special emphasis should be placed upon helping to create a sense of community and enhance the town's quality of life by providing an efficient, safe, convenient, and aesthetically pleasing transportation system for the movement of people, goods, and services. Or, under pathways, ensure that the safety of pedestrians, bicyclists, and equestrians utilizing the pathway systems within the core is the number one priority. It's an interesting plan, and I encourage you to take another look at it for those of you who oversaw its development when you were on the council, or if you've not yet done so. I know these are idealistic sounding, they're goals, but it seems as if we're probably going in the opposite direction. Cave Creek Road is becoming something of a hazard, and it isn't meant to be a parking lot. Thank you.
Jane Rhodes.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm Jane Rhodes. I'm a Cave Creek resident on the west side. Uh, my face is completely red because I hate public speaking, but I felt concerned enough to make myself get up here anyway. I've lived in Cave Creek for over 10 years. Uh, I spent most of my adult life as a consultant to the heads of large and small corporations, and I'm not naive about how that world works, um, but I've never attended town council meetings either here or anywhere else, um, so I'm ignorant about this world. I don't know any of you, and I really don't know anybody in the audience. I've met briefly a few people. I've only started attending meetings after this recent recall election. What I've watched here has shocked me and leads me to a genuine question, that is whether it's you, individual council members, or if it's the process that's in place for these town meetings that's causing that shock. Um, I'd like to illustrate my alarm by talking about an issue of personal concern, and that's Kahaba Springs. Originally, I celebrated this development, um, but as I dug into it, I have come to strongly oppose it. What I've witnessed in council meetings is, um, that there are dozens of residents expressing their concerns and objections. Nobody has given you good data and helpful suggestions. We all, all of us know that you have a lot on your plate, so it seemed reasonable to me that you might appreciate citizens offering their thoughts and bringing you information that you might not otherwise have. What has shocked me is this, um, when Mark Staff gets up to speak, you are more cordial and friendly to him than to any of your own town residents. You always thank him profusely and in kind remarks for him, and yet rarely, it seems to me, do you thank or even acknowledge any of the numerous town residents who have given you information and feedback. You just proceed to vote as if no one out here has asked any questions, put any question forward to you, or has raised any serious issues that warrant some response. I don't understand that time is tight in these meetings, but what I would ask, beg, is for just the courtesy of a thank you, or, and I'm not talking about just me, I'm talking about sort of speaking for everybody without knowing that they agree with any of us, or give us some thoughts about what's been presented to you, or give us any kind of acknowledgement that you actually hear us when we out here get up here to speak, 'cause I'm guessing there are other people that are also afraid to do this, and it takes a while. Come up here. Um, when we listen in silence and then proceed to vote anyway, I'm shocked. Um, I'd love to puzzle out for myself whether you disregard us out of arrogance, um, or maybe just an unintentional rudeness, or is it stress about the time, or is it that these various matters have all been wired beforehand, and the rest of us out here be damned? I don't know. Um, I really want to think the best of each of you, and I want to understand this kind of process, um, and how I can contribute to it, not destroy it. Um, so I'm up here tonight wrestling with these horrible fears, um, to basically beseech you to see how it might look, at least to some of us, and help us out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President. Marie. Does anyone else wish to speak on a call of public?
Yes, I submit it.
The call to the public?
Yes.
How about you, Ms. Murphy?
No.
Okay.
Is that a yes?
Okay, it is a yes.
Okay.
I'm here to introduce Ally Peters from Arizona Republic.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having me. Um, it was just brought to my attention that, uh, maybe some numbers about our publication were being thrown around, and I wanted to bring the facts tonight, just so that it was all up in the, out in the open. Um, I have worked for the Arizona Republic for three years. We're Republic Media, so I'm a multimedia rep, I work with a lot of small businesses. Um, this is my territory. I've worked with Cave Creek, Carefree, all of North Scottsdale, Real Birdie, the Scottsdale Air Park. So, um, mostly what I do is meet with small to medium sized businesses and find out what their needs are, and help them get their message out, and reach the right audience. Um, so a little bit about, just to correct some numbers that were thrown out, um, the Arizona Republic obviously has a full run newspaper, but we also reach an area that's called Zone Eight. It's the community republic, it's called the Scottsdale Republic, and the actual circulation numbers that I got from our direct mail department, um, for how many people we reached with our publication in Cave Creek is 2,113 people. Um, so what your numbers are for, you know, population of the town and how you calculate that, so the correct percentage we saturate, that would be calculated by whatever your numbers are. The internet is not always very accurate with population counts, so you'll probably have that. Um, and I have our Alliance for Audited Media, um, with me today, so if anyone would like, I have a couple copies I can share with you, and then you can make copies, just to show exact circulation numbers for the full run Arizona Republic. Um, again, we're audited, so on Sunday, we reached 342,000 people. Um, so depending on the needs of the town, I'd be happy to, you know, give my input as to how I could, we could help, or public media could actually be part of the town's plan for next year for advertising. Um, again, just wanted to make sure that you had all the accurate numbers, um, to work from when making decisions about advertising for the town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to? Yes. Mr. Thorpe.
Hello, my name is TC Horson. My address is 5632 East Yucca Road, the hillside of Lamar, called Hogs and Horses in Cave Creek, 6705 East Cave Creek Road, which is across the highway. And I know I missed a few meetings, so I apologize to the people who, who, um, that wasn't here. But anyway, long story short, and that is, I've heard the stories and people not liking the road being blocked off, and I can feel your pain, and I can understand what you're saying, but I have a place with 10 acres, and I will make it more than convenient for all the bikers that park there if they want for Bike Week, so that gets them off the street. If they don't want to, that's fine, but that's right across the highway. It's a short walk, it's a 30-foot walk, and that gets them off the street, and that makes it better for the town and safer for the public, and the traffic can move faster and flow through during any Bike Week events. Thank you.
Call of the public is still open? Okay, council, let's proceed. Town manager, Mr. Thorpe. There are three items on the consent, uh, agenda. Motion to approve. Motion made and seconded at all, those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? The ayes are we having. Thank you, council. We're going to go, uh, move it out of order here in the agenda. I'm like, um, tied up in work as to how these things deal. No one to blame but your mayor for that. Uh, number eight, we're going to do first, that is a continued item, and therefore takes precedent on the agenda to which it was destined, which is this one. So, uh, number eight on the agenda is council discussion and possible directions to town matter regarding use of Sonoran News for town's Cave Creek advertising. As noted, this item was continually from May 18th. The item is brought to the council by Councilman Litsky and Councilwoman Clancy, and we will get their comments after the motion is made. But first, the public comment session of this agenda item is now open. Do you want us to speak on agenda item number eight?
I mean, right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Is the Sonoran News, as identified by Arizona law, a real newspaper? The definition of a newspaper means, this is by law, a publication regularly issued for dissemination of news of a general and public character at stated intervals of the time from a known office of publication, varying the dates of issue and the route consecutively. It must not be designed primarily for free circulation or circulation at nominal rates. Since, I respectfully submit that the Sonoran News does not meet the definition of a newspaper under Arizona law, ARS 39-201 capital A. Since the Sonoran News does not fall within the definition of a newspaper, this council cannot award a contract to it to publish public notice at a cost of which to be paid by town funds. ARS S 39-202 capital A and capital B provide as follows. All bids for public printing by a newspaper shall be accompanied by an affidavit of the publisher that the newspaper complies with provisions of ARS 39-201. Contracts for publishing any notice or matter, the cost of which is paid from public funds, shall be awarded at a public bidding only when the publisher has filed the affidavit that is required in subsection A. This, I respectfully again submit, the Sonoran News does not meet the definition or follow the criteria by law. Thank you.
I saw another hand. Uh, Mr. Stark.
You may start, Cave Creek President. Uh, today I received an email from Standard Rating Data. They're the benchmark for publications, both magazine and newspaper circulation data, and, uh, they don't know who the Sonoran News is. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beth Ballman, 5613 East Morning Star Road, and I moved here 10 years ago, and naturally picked up the Sonoran News, and, um, I really couldn't read it because it was so filled with venom and malice, and, um, I occasionally dig it up again to see if I can read it because it's a local paper, and I can't. And it just seems to me that there are good reasons to not promote that paper, so that's just my opinion as, as one citizen, but I'm kind of surprised that we would consider that option. Thank you.
Mayor and council, uh, thank you for wanting me to speak. I'm Kelly Smith, 7265 East Continental Estates Drive. Are Cave Creek's decisions associated with contracts for services should be based on independent analysis of the options that are prepared either by town staff or by independent third parties whose expertise in the issue is documented, and not by an individual or entity that has a vested interest in the outcome of the decision? The only material that is provided along with the agenda, associated with the cost analysis of delivering public notices to citizens of Cave Creek, was prepared by the Sonoran News. That was the only thing that was attached to the material for the agenda for this meeting. The analysis does a detailed assessment of the costs of providing Cave Creek households public notices by taking the cost per column inch and dividing it by the number of households that are contacted, so they will put, will put a cost per inch per thousand households, compare that with the cost for the Arizona Republic, making two different assumptions about the number of subscribers that are Cave Creek residents, that are subscribers to the Arizona Republic. I contacted the Arizona Republic and spoke with Ms. Peters, actually via email, who spoke earlier, to try to get an assessment, an independent assessment, of the numbers of those subscribers. I asked because I was interested in an ad in the fall and wanted to know the number of subscribers and the number of newspapers distributed. I didn't get a clear answer on the number of subscribers, but I did get an answer on the number of newspapers distributed, which was approximately a thousand to the Cave Creek Zone Eight area. If we accept the Arizona Republic's estimates of the number of subscribers, and that is rather the Sonoran News estimate of the Arizona Republic's subscribers, and add in the thousand, then the Arizona Republic either ties or beats the Sonoran News' cost estimates. Now, if we take Ms. Peters' estimates that she just provided tonight of the number of subscribers, then the Arizona Republic is far more cost effective than the Sonoran News. Why is this important? It's very clear that the Sonoran News was a strong advocate for those of you who were elected in the recent recall. It's therefore especially important, it seems to me, to you and to the mayor and to the council members who were not involved in the recall, then you consider the information you have available to make this decision. I urge that no change be made to the newspaper until a full set of estimates that can be detailed and prepared by an independent third party is available to you for decision-making. Otherwise, it seems to me you run the risk of compromising the public trust in your decision-making, because it appears that you made a decision on the basis of information that was prepared by an entity that would gain from that decision. Thank you. Uh, the common, Mr. Thorpe. Ms. Spitzer.
I've already planned on speaking on this item, but since the mayor pushed it up to number one, um, I have curiosity on this. It seems to me that perhaps four council people need to accuse themselves on these items, since the Sonoran News directly supported you and helped your campaign to get you where you are. So it seems to me that would be the ethical thing to do. Thank you.
Well, you've just heard from the dark side. Here they are, all assembled.
Oh, we're over here, too.
We have attempted to get the numbers for Arizona Republic for years. They never would give it to us. Now we have a lady up here who says, "I've got numbers." Mr. Thorpe, wait a second, sir. What?
Didn't say who we get.
Uh, Don Sorcheck, uh, citizen of Cave Creek, editor and publisher of the Sonoran News, and not writing his biography, but that's in the... So where you heard from is people who gave us the slate, who gave us last minute, who kicked us out immediately, and so I'm trying to remedy that. We have no...
We have no idea what the Arizona Republic is except for surveys that were taken that said eight percent or said twenty percent. Now, they now are saying they're fifty percent. That's still not a hundred percent. Sonoran News' provision goes to every single listed postal address in town. I assume that's what the council wants. And for anyone to say that anybody out there is voting because we were for them, it's because you were best qualified, that's the only reason.
Public comment is still open? Yes.
I just want to clarify that we... I'm Ally Peters of Arizona Republic, excuse me. I just do want to clarify that it wouldn't be very hard to get the numbers from anyone there. It's public knowledge because we are audited. So we are audited, meaning a third party audits the publication. It also audits our website, so the azcentral.com, which I'm sure many people in the nation have consumed the content on that site. The value in running any advertising, whatever it is, with a publication that is paid for is that the people have paid for it, they have a vested interest in reading, and they are interested in receiving that publication. So you can distribute a free publication, but are people reading it? How do you prove that? So the question just is, and I don't want to argue with anyone, I just want to bring the facts about who we are because I think it's only fair that I have a chance to tell you more about who the Republic is and, like Dr. Smith said, is give you the actual facts about who we are. And we can provide that. We've audited, it's right here, if you need it, and if anybody wants it, I can bring copies. So, thank you very much.
There was another hand.
Good evening, Council. Jody Lees, and we Cave Creek residents. I guess my question last week when you proposed this was the cost, and he was supposed to bring his best price, and I hope that changed. Mr. Sorcheck, I'm not the dark side, I'm the bright sunny side. I have nothing against you or your Republic, but distributorship is not leadership. It's needlework. I don't make my needle home because it's really because I read it last issue because he said that the facts of this meeting were in it, and it was until you got to the end where people questioned the Sonoran News, and then it completely just said, "We're going to revisit this," period. That's not a quote, but that was the end. And lots of people stood up and questioned it. So I think by all means you should take into consideration what these other people have brought forward. It seems to be a little more true. Thank you.
I believe another hand was raised. Okay, we're going to take three more speakers on this issue, and then I want to move it to council. Council has an ambitious agenda before this evening.
Hello, Mayor, and Councilmen and Women. Stacy Daniel, Cave Creek resident. We receive the Sonoran News in our P.O. box, in our cluster box, and I've never subscribed to it, nor do we read it. Thanks.
I believe there was another hand raised. I'm sorry, Mr. Smith.
Terry Smith, Cave Creek resident, 26th Street. Sonoran News, you can love it, you can hate it, but it comes to everybody. If you're looking for information, everybody gets it if they want to look in there and see. They don't have to read the rest of the newspaper. But if you're wanting to know what, I guess, public notices are or whatever the town is putting out, at least this way, if it does go to the Sonoran News, it will get in everybody's hands. And if they choose to throw it in the garbage can, that's their business, they won't find out what's going on. The vast majority of the residents in this town are not reading the Republic. It is not a Cave Creek publication. If Sonoran News is a newspaper or not, I have no clue. I just know that everybody gets it. And if somebody wants to find out what's going on, at least it's in their hands. Thank you.
One more speaker on this particular item would like to speak.
Toby Payne, I live in 39795, North Old Station. I'm seeing this Arizona Republic. I didn't come for this at all, I just came to see how council meetings are running, what's going on. I see the Arizona Republic doing a zone eight, and my questioning would be, is zone eight the zip code or is it strictly zone eight is within the town limits?
Do you want to answer that or no?
Do you have an answer to the gentleman's question?
I do. Zone eight is actually a whole area that reaches north of Scottsdale, Cave Creek, Carefree. It's just everything north of Shea, straight up, basically. I'm sorry.
So what I'm hearing is, is it is not just the homes within Cave Creek, which is what we're concerned about?
Correct. We just have circulation numbers, hard circulation, so we know who actually subscribes to the Arizona Republic within Cave Creek. And the number that I pulled, like I said, from direct mail was 2,113 people.
Glad to be here.
Thank you.
I thank Ally Peters for being here to give us true numbers on circulation. But when you think about it, don't, doesn't Cave Creek want larger circulation to draw more people into Cave Creek for their events? They covered Taste of Cave Creek, the most recent ones. It was a huge success. So I just can't understand why you would even, unless you have to have payback for publication when you were running for council. Thank you.
Ten citizens have spoke on this matter. We thank you for that. It's time for council to do its work. This item is sponsored by Councilwoman Clancy and Councilwoman Lipsky. I have a sonora variety of motion.
So...
You need to read the motion.
Motion to direct the town manager regarding the use of the Sonoran News for the town Cave Creek advertising, specifically the advertising that has to do with public notice. Motion to direct the town manager regarding the use of the Sonoran News for the town and Cave Creek advertising, specifically the advertising that has to do with public notice.
You need a second?
I have a second.
So you have the floor count from your motion. Do you wish to say anything or...?
No, I think it says for itself. I think people are confused that all advertising for the town will go to the Sonoran News. The town has a choice, and I agree. When we have an event that affects the... Heck, that could be a thirty or forty mile radius. It depends who wants to come out here. I think bike week brings people in from a whole lot of states. So, you know, it's where it gets the most advertising for the buck. But when it comes to public information and what's going on, who wants to ensure that everybody who lives in town has it delivered to them? Or we could spend a lot more funds than we see in the past and we could mail it to you. Except that just goes to all people who have water that they get from the town in their publication. I have a ballot, I wouldn't get the information. But I guess I could go online and blow them away. So that's really what we're looking for, is that you get that information. If you look at the newspapers that are around us, including the Arizona Republic, which most people I know don't get, I still get it, I enjoy reading the paper, but that's a Scottsdale paper. And there isn't anyone from that particular magazine or newspaper that comes up here and sits here at every one of our meetings, writing up what takes place here. There's only one. And in that one's the newspaper, Sonoran News. You'll like it, you'll don't like it. The idea is to get that information in your hands so that no one can say they didn't get it. I don't have that paper. Or all those other papers don't write anything about what goes in here. That's the issue. It's not about payback. Sorry.
You read the rest of the...
Whoa, 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 no, 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 we're not doing that. We're not doing that in the community tonight. Is that your chance to speak? This is now council's responsibility to discuss, debate, and make a decision. Councilwoman Lipsky, you have a second.
The reason that I initially wanted to bring this to council was that when advertising was pulled from the Sonoran News by the previous council, it was done purely out of spite and in Kutch's words, payback, because the newspaper didn't support them. I thought that was wrong. I still think it was wrong. And the Sonoran News is unquestionably, for better or worse, and anyone who knows me and my history in this town knows that, I can't believe I'm saying this, but the... or that I brought this to council, the Sonoran News is the paper writer of this town. If you accept the number that we just heard, that the Republic has a circulation of 2,113 in Cave Creek, that still leaves some number of Cave Creek residents out of that loop where every resident in town gets the Sonoran News, read it or not. The most important thing to me is the dissemination of the information, and the information is best disseminated through Sonoran News, like it or not. It's just a fact. And as Councilwoman Clancy just pointed out, they are here at every council meeting reporting almost word for word, not plain word for word, but almost word for word on the council meeting. Chuckle as you may, there is the Sonoran News taking very, very gaudy notes on what's happening here tonight, and they're going to report it. The Republic doesn't do that. I wish they did, but they don't. One thing I'm very interested in, though, and I'd like to ask council about, is I mean rights charge that the Sonoran News doesn't meet the legal definition of a newspaper, and is that true? And if that's true, are they out of the running for this advertising?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Burnbaum.
Thank you. Mayor, Councilwoman Lipsky. Under Arizona statutes, public notices have to be given in newspapers that meet certain statutory criteria. Our analysis is that the Sonoran News does not meet that criteria, period. Now, so the motion as stated, as stated, in our view, does not comport with Arizona law. Having said that, and I was there at your last meeting when you discussed this, my understanding is that the proposal that had been made by the Sonoran News was that public notices that were presented for publication would be published in the Heel of Bend newspaper, which is a qualified newspaper, and then apparently also published in the Sonoran News. I have no idea whether that's a reasonable process or a reasonable price, but that's what I understood, was the effort that was being made to comply with the Arizona statutes. So I hope that's clear, Councilwoman Lipsky. As stated, Councilwoman Clancy, as I understood it, was proposing that public notices be placed in the Sonoran News as comporting with Arizona law. The town attorneys disagree with that. That cannot be done. I answered several questions, but more than that...
Councilman Nester?
Several years ago, the Scottsdale Republic under the leadership of the earlier Robert Ledger held a forum, and we held it in these chambers. And I cornered him after, and I asked him a question, and I said, with the advent of the internet, will there be a print copy of newspapers in my lifetime? He said, yes, but we're desperate for readership. And just lately, and incidentally, stepping back a page, in those days, we had a reporter, I can't remember her name, but she's very good, came, as Linda does all the time, and took notes, and published some articles in the Scottsdale Republic. Later, we had another gentleman who was very close to the previous administration, et cetera, and I'll set on that. And what Ledger told me is that they needed to do something to get the Arizona Republic back on everyone's mind. Lately, they're giving away free subscriptions. I like to read the paper also. I get it on Wednesdays and Sundays. I like to get it early, so I go down to the Forest Center and buy a copy so my wife can read it before she goes to work. I guess my point is, as Councilwoman Lipsky said, regardless of the correctness of the Sonoran News, since I've been here for 28 years, it was the paper that we all read. He used to depict me as a rat, and he's a mean, annoying son of a bitch, but it is the paper. And I don't know that he supported me that heavily in the last election. That wasn't the issue. The issue was the previous administration and what they did. We never got to go to the party, but we get to clean up the mess. But I know how I feel about what you folks over here do.
Stay on the agenda, Council. Councilman Maglar, on your agenda.
Yes, I have a question for legal counsel. Mr. Burnbaum, you stated that the motion, as it was made, you don't believe is a legal motion. Is the motion, as it is printed in the agenda, a legal motion?
I don't believe there is a motion printed in the agenda. Council discussion of possible direction to the town manager regarding each of the Sonoran News?
The staff recommendation.
To direct the town manager? Without Councilwoman Maglar, that's a very good question. If you are directing the town manager about advertising and not public notices, and you are doing it in a way that does not directly contradict the statute, which says the Sonoran News is not a qualified paper for public notices, I suppose you could pass that using the word advertising and have a motion that might be ambiguous, but nevertheless is not clearly legal. Not sure that's a good idea.
Yes, may I make a friendly amendment, if I may? I will try to make this a legal, clearly legal motion, and that is that this council directs our staff to put legal notices into the Sonoran News... directs our staff to put legal notices into the Sonoran News and to be sure that such action is done in accordance with the requirements of state statutes.
Yeah, it's on the... Mayor, Councilman Maguire, the difficulty with your attempted correction is, it again at least implies that the town will put a public notice in the Sonoran News, and that will be an effective legal notice under the statutes. You can't do that. You could perhaps come up with some approach light, and the Sonoran News will, on behalf of the town, place the ad in a qualifying newspaper like the Republic, and then also place it in the Sonoran News. But with all due respect, I think the motion as you corrected it still isn't there. It still says, put it in the Sonoran News in a manner that complies with the statute, and that I do not believe can be done.
Counselor, if I may, I implied and did not state well that in accordance with state statutes would mean that notices would be placed in the Sonoran News and also in another newspaper in order to meet the state statutes.
Thank you. Mayor, it's at least my opinion as I sit here that as long as you comply with the state statute by, for example, using the Capital Times or the Republic or the Heelabend paper, you can go duplicate or triplicate the publication anywhere you want to if you feel that's the appropriate expenditure of public funds.
You accept that as a friendly amendment, Councilwoman? Okay. And that's what is before the council. Councilman, you're still on the floor.
The Sonoran News is indeed a publication. We may agree or disagree with what's printed in the Sonoran News, those who have been endorsed, those who have been opposed, those who have been ignored, but it is a publication that goes to nearly every house in Cave Creek. It is also a local business. Thank you.
I think I wasn't real happy with the previous group, through Mr. Swircheck out, but I haven't always been happy with reporting the Sonoran News either. But it's not about being happy. We hear this word transparency. And I've been hearing this word for three years now, starting with the last election. Transparency is the ability to see what your local government's doing. If the numbers for the... I keep wanting to say Gazette, but that's the one I used to take, usually after your newspaper. But the Republic are accurate. We're not reaching all the people in town, so unfortunately, it's going to cost more money. I hate that. I know I still think that it should be up to staff, yet from a political type opinion, we really should be helping every household in the community. First, let me just address a couple of things council met here. And I do agree that one would have to publish in the Sonoran News, reach all the households, and also publish in the Gilbert paper in order to meet the once-weekly statute requirement. I understand that, but to also add without the fact that duplicating your costs, because I'm sure that doesn't add any cost to discount the rate that the Sonoran News has offered, so it's not a cost issue. And one, and number two, it's kind of funny. If we're going by, this is payback because the Sonoran News supported me, I guess I should be supporting the public because they've supported me twice, and Sonoran News strongly supported me this last time. And again, I believe that the support for me personally was more disliked for the way the administration was going. So, and I don't have the expectation that a small community of folks are going to view this in a negative way, as they view almost everything we do in a negative way. And that's, that I can live with. So I support this for one reason. This is the way that most people in Cave Creek can find out what's coming before this council and get legal notice so they can come and participate, pretty much. That's all. I don't have any other reason for it, but I do support this.
The emails that I've received since the last meeting about this particular issue form to calculus. Excuse me. The first category is the editorial comment of the Sonoran News. That is not what is before council. That is a free speech issue. And whether you agree or disagree with Mr. Swircheck writes, I think everyone in this room supports the concept of free speech. The second volume concerning the emails that are getting from the citizens, as well as a column inch, is a method that a newspaper uses to... It's how the newspaper is designed. Each newspaper is different. You notice the Republic is designed differently than, say, a tabloid site. It's a column inch. It's certainly used for editorial purposes, and it's also used to calculate advertising. When the Trump Paradise advertises its events, we frequently take out a three-by-six in sports, three inches by six inches. That's 18 inches. And we're shooting for P3 of sports because that's what we're going to be. You take that 18 inches to rate a column inch, and that will give you the price. The reason why I am supporting this, it is my only interest, is how to communicate this with 5,000 citizens in this community. I am not concerned, except in a remotely compassionate sort of way, about any other residents or any other citizens. And this paper goes into the public. To me, it is the most effective way of getting our legal notices now, our promotional notices, is because it is going to the 5,000 citizens in this community, and they are the ones that, and I don't think I'm alone in this, I think council is with me on this one, that we want to communicate with. And this is the most effective way of doing it. Go, please, Carrie. Marie. Carrie Marie.
Councilwoman Abner?
I approve of the motion as amended.
If that is, Councilman?
Yes.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Demar?
Yes.
Councilman Maguire?
Yes.
Councilman Lepuski?
Yes.
Mayor Clancy?
Yes, five to seven to zero unanimously. The motion carries, thank you, council. We're going to move to agenda item number five. Thank you, citizens, for speaking. Agenda item number five is, council, discussion of approval of reservation R2015-16, a value in portion of GLO patent reservations south of Olson Road and east of Cave Creek Road. Is there something?
Thank you. The town manager cannot be the last to report on the subject. Now, our government land off of patent reservations in various places throughout town, especially around Kipper and Riley Hill, Island and South. This particular property has patent reservations around two sides. What that means is, if you'd like to traverse the property, get it to the public, the developer of this property, it's a commercial site on the east side of Cave Creek Road, wishes to have the town's interest in this, it's abandoned. He's been working on it for over a year, I believe, given previous to Mr. Prinzold. So that is the request before you, is to put the town to abandon its interest in this patent reservation on the property. I think that's in effect the development of the property.
Okay, question from council. Councilman Maguire, what's...
Does this make it more difficult for the town to locate its infrastructure or services?
Councilman Maguire, members of council, no, it does not. Town would ask the essential grounds, if it needs justice.
Additional questions from the councilman?
I want me to say of housekeeping, I support the resolution.
Anything else? Is there anybody representing the project here? Mayor?
Don't push yourself. Thank you. Mayor, council, thank you for having me. Hi, Peter Nelson, owner of the parcel. Good to be back in front of everybody. Here to answer any questions one might have related to the requested abandonment, as the email relayed. The access already exists on Cave Creek Road and Olson Road, and the requested abandonment on the property is not used or necessary in any way. But if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer whatever I might.
Any other questions from council? Councilman Maguire?
Yes. What is your reason for requesting that the town abandon this right of way?
Because it's not in use in any way, and it traverses the east portion of a property and deconsisted of the site plan that was approved for development in October of 2014. We're just seeking to have that one portion removed so that we can proceed with the rest of development. Again, all the right of way that exists along Cave Creek Road and Olson is what is used by the town for apologies.
Thank you. Additional questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Nelson. Thank you. Okay, there is public comment on agenda item number five. Okay, we're back to council. We need a motion here. Thank you, Councilman Abner.
Move to approve resolution R2015-16, a resolution of the county council of the town of Cave Creek, of Long American County, abandoning a portion of GLO patent reservation south of Olson Road and east of Cave Creek Road.
Second. Motion made, and sorry, Councilman Abner?
As the gentleman indicated, it's required to complete the planned development with basically house...
Councilman Maguire, you have a second? Yes, please support our businesses involved in this business to Cave Creek. This is not something that is of detriment to the town, but it is something that can help our new business.
Anything else from council? Councilman Bunch?
These were created by the federal government. We don't have any right to get rid of them, contrary to what the Arizona court of appeals have decided, where anybody can sue anybody over the use of them. I don't support it.
Anything else from council? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That the record would reflect that the vote was six to one, and the motion carries, thank you, council. We're going to go to... Going to go to agenda item number three. Public hearing over the vote formation, the comments, and revitalization of the town of Cave Creek. Mr. Rosenfeld, I think you are up.
Members of the council, my name is Fred Rosenfeld, and I will try and be the coordinator of tonight's hearing. I would like to say at the start that I think it should work like this, subject to your approval, that those people objecting should speak first. They should identify themselves and state whether or not they are residents of the town, and either by agreeing with others or what, they should give their opposition to the proposed district. On the other hand, when the objectors are done, then the proponents of the district should have a light period to talk. I'm going to ask this, that questions come from the council members at any time to anyone, but that if there are questions from one side to the other, they wait to the end of the presentation of the individual who makes it, and then ask to ask questions, ask for the mayor's permission to ask questions if they have any. But as I said, anytime the councilman and the mayor can ask any question of any of these speakers. I am here, I would ask, the other thing is, there will be legal arguments on each side. I think it's up to the opposition or the proponents to respond to legal questions raised by the other side. You may ask me, but I don't want to get into the fight over it, but I would say, however, that each side should respond to legal issues raised by the other. If you have any questions, please let me know. If not, I think you could start.
Council, any questions of our bond counsel, Mr. Rosenfeld? Mr. Rosenfeld, I'll give as much leeway as I can to your format, but council has a number of items it must address.
I would ask that everybody be briefed if it's okay.
Okay, is there anything from the... Are you speaking, are you presenting for the applicant? If so, I'll go right to the public.
I am not presenting for anybody. I'm a neutral. The objectors should start. It's the hearing.
Right. Give to the public, which is the second, Mr. Staff or your attorney? Did you wish to present, and then I will go to the public?
I have nothing specific to vent, Banger. I think everything has been asked, answered, so I'm here to answer further questions.
Okay, well, then we will go to the public comment. Marie?
I'm still Jane Rhodes, still a resident on the west side. I just feel was rushing. I can't speak to legal issues, so if that's all we're addressing here, then I have no comments. Is that correct?
No, you may speak.
You may make comments.
I have several concerns about this project. I'll just state my top three right now. One is water. I've followed the reports about the drought in the west for a number of years. I've never met Kerry Smith, but his data about Cave Creek water heightened my concerns about the local situation. I just want to go and rect it, and I'm very concerned that adding this development can only mean greater water problems for Cave Creek. And I might footnote that it probably doesn't affect me and my husband personally, because we have to have water hauled in, and it's Phoenix water, but I'm concerned about the town of Cave Creek residents. Second is, I was an actuary for many years, and I was trained to look at financial proposals and so on. I just, I have a lot of concerns about this. Of course, I don't have all the data on this, but I'm not sure any of you do either, and I really want to urge you to get that data. Well, the third thing is traffic. I had the idea that some of you had personal objections to Hobbs Brothers putting on a connection through to the east end, because I think some of you live over that way, and you're concerned about that impact on you, your properties. And I just want to say I appreciate that, because I have no same concerns. And 200 or even 400 cars a day from this development going up and down 26th Street is an awful prospect. And I just don't like your concern that we have concerns as strong as the east side. I don't want that this property only has one in and out to it. I understand the project has dragged on for many years, and I'm asking you to please allow it to drag on for at least a few moments. I understand we've got new attorneys. Wait until you get counsel that you trust and believe in, and have them look at this, and get a better handle on what this really means for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Marie?
Janice Smith Hatt. Janice Smith Hatt, Cave Creek. Good evening, Mayor, council. A host of legal material and business practice information has been turned over to this council, and due diligence requires that this council take the time to review this material before any approval of Cohaba Springs revitalization district. About six months ago, Cohaba Springs Development Corporation, one of the petitioners for the revitalization district, assigned all rights, title, et cetera. It had to Cohaba, to CS Investments, Inc., a Minnesota corporation. This transfer of rights, title, et cetera, under an irrevocable trust, raises an issue regarding which corporations are authorized to petition for a revitalization district. Cave Creek has a privilege of being a small town, allowing us to be one community. We can't remain one community if your vote can allow certain people to be separate from the rest of us. So, yes, approval of Cohaba Springs revitalization district will change our town forever.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Timothy Lasota.
Good evening, members of council and mayor. I'm Timothy Lasota. I'm an attorney in Phoenix, but I'm here representing Eileen Wright, who is a resident of Cave Creek and is, like many people, very concerned about this new special taxing district that is being proposed. But I don't want... I'm not going to talk a lot about the merits, but I do want to point out a significant flaw in the process that's been followed in attempting to implement this district. And I guess protocol here is to hand my pile of materials to Councilman Lipsky, so I'll go over it. So read it if you want, but there's the resolution. I might go over the statute next. So looking at the resolution, if you look at page three, and I'll hold it up here, you notice that it says, "A public hearing on the formation of the district shall be held on [blank] 2015 at 6:00 p.m." There's nothing there. This resolution was signed by the mayor, as approved by the town of Cave Creek, April 20, 2015. You can see that on page four. Now, if you go to the actual statute...
We don't have anything yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. It hasn't made your way? Well, let me... I think the councilman asked her. I have three minutes, so I'm trying to make it quick. But there's a... You can see the blank there under paragraph E. So if you look at the actual statute, which should be coming next, but I'll read it to you verbatim. It talks about resolution of intent for this special taxing district. And it states, "The resolution shall state the following: The date, time, and place of the hearing to be held on the formation of the district." This resolution, as you can plainly see, did not state that. It's... I would say it's not effective. This district, if you think you're forming it tonight with a vote, I think you're mistaken. So what happens? Okay, we get down the road. Maybe you do what I suggest and not vote on this tonight, and you redo this in the correct way. Hopefully, you'll reconsider doing it at all, but at a minimum, it should be done correctly. But if you go down the road, this entity forms. It starts assessing taxes. It starts assessing user fees. It starts doing those things it's empowered to do by statute. It starts building things. Well, what happens down the road? Someone sues and says this district was never lawfully formed. The directors, if it wasn't lawfully formed, they may be on the hook personally to disgorge the funds that have been raised under the color of a governmental entity that does not legally exist. So I hope you'll consider the fact that we have a statute that uses the word "shall," doesn't say "may," it doesn't have any wiggle room. It doesn't... You know, there's really no way out of its dictates. And it states, "The resolution shall state the following: The date, time, and place of the hearing to be held on the formation of the district." The resolution does not state that. It's pretty simple, and I think that this council should reconsider its efforts to implement a special taxing district within its own quarters, especially since it's not done so legally. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Marie? Does anyone else wish to speak on agenda item number three? Yes, Mr. Smith. Shame on you.
I am directly affected by this in a big way. I mean, I have been here... I'm Kerry Smith, Cave Creek resident, Twenty-Sixth. I've heard several times talking about Cohaba Springs for I don't know how many years, ten years or whatever it is. Right now, as I've told the council before, Cohaba Springs and its previous development has put in water lines and everything right up the road in front of this water... I mean, fire hydrants, everything. We are hauling in water, and we are paying the government prices. The town and the mayor... The mayor had told me, "Well, we'll get water up to you no matter what." Well, I just have to convince him before the meeting. And he said, "Well, I'll support it." Well, we need to get something done. I don't know about the legality which was just mentioned. That's not my thing. If... Matter of fact, you know, Cohaba Springs has come, it's gone, it's come, it's gone. It depends on the economics of it. Right now, we have an opportunity, what I see, for them to mortgage their property, to go ahead and put in roads and water lines and everything else so we can have water in West Cave Creek. I think some people think it's going to put in roads to connect us into town. That is not in there. I wish it was. I would love to be part of this town, since I've been here for, what, twenty years or whatever. But that is not an issue at this point. It's just simply the way I see it, it's no difference. And if the road that I'm on, if we got together and we wanted to bring a water line in, we would form a district, and we would be taxed, or we would have to pay to bring that... Have a contractor put it in, and we'd have to pay back through this improvement district. I understand it's similar to that. Mr. Birburn would probably say it's legal or not. That's all I care about. But I would like, council, if this does not go through and we do not get it taken care of, we have been told that the town will go ahead and do the improvements, take over the line, and give us water. So if you don't put it, or it does not go through for any reason, I'd like commitments from each one of you on council saying, "Yes, we will support you on the west side. We will go ahead and spend the itty-bitty money less than what you spend for improving the curbs along the road or something, so we can have water." We have waited years and years since this line has began. But I do support it. I don't know about the linkles, like I said, but we are sitting over here looking at the possibility of getting water in, getting things done. I think they're just putting in roads and water, is what I understand. And they're giving it, turning it over to the town. The town doesn't have to pay for the water. The town doesn't have to pay for the roads. I see no problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Of course. I'm curious to know from our council whether... Or what comment he has based on Ms. Lasota's concerns.
This is... I know you're not able to... The bottom counsel.
Okay.
So I'm...
I think it does have, and I think we should have filled it in, frankly. The effect of that would go to whether or not the motion set to date, because at the time, it wasn't clear to me when it was going to be filled in. So I would think that the motion would have to have set the date, and then we would... I would have to do some research on the question of whether or not it's failed. So I cannot directly answer that question right now.
Thank you. How much time do you think you would need to do that?
I would need two days to do it.
Okay, thanks. And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I made that commitment.
Thank you. I have a question. Can we amend the question?
Can you amend? No, it's not on your... It is not on our agenda. It has to be on the agenda to amend the resolution.
Set as by the union rights.
Yes, it would take a... If it is failed, it would take another meeting, and it would have to be on the agenda to reset.
Mr. Rosenfeld.
Mr. Rosenfeld, would approving this agenda item tonight potentially put the town in jeopardy of legal action and needing to defend the town's...
The... Any action to adopt the resolution formula after the meeting requires a lawsuit within a certain amount of time, right? Twenty or thirty days? Or it's all things away? So my thought on that is that it probably is faster to fix it, if fixing is needed, than to have a lawsuit. You would not want a lawsuit over something like that. It is not in your best interest to expend money to defend that if that happens. Mr. Smith? Did you wish to say anything? I won't say what he asked, though, because it is of some importance. He said, "Was the notice attached to the resolution, and did it have the date?" And I would have to check the actual resolution if I don't have good news right now. Do you have...
Okay, Mr. Rosenfeld, I understand you correctly what you are counseling the council if something needs to be added to this motion and were it to be.
If it does, it must be read. Readopted in its original form, if that needs to be done.
Does that...
I think... Are some of this needs to be done?
As I said to Counselor Nwir, I have to research. This is the first I've heard of it. I do have to research the question to give you an affirmative or negative answer.
I see.
Question is, was the...
Mr. Staff? Can you wait to the next council meeting? I don't want this to clear up.
Mayor, I want this to be done properly. I'm happy to do whatever is proper.
That gives me attraction, council. I'm going to make a motion to continue this item until the council meeting of June the fifteenth. The motion has been made in second to continue this item, agenda item number three. June the fifteenth, next, council. Do all those in favor of placing a five to a three?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it. Thank you, council. We go to agenda item number one. Let's get this right for next time the council council. Counselor, don't stand in five to a reset. Thank you.